Workshop and if one of you would like to begin and then set the stage and then proceed.
First of all, thank, thank you so much for having us here today. We really appreciate it. To give you some background on DHL's development, we have multiple developments in Lebanon County. However, the one we're talking about today is in Andale. So it's in South Andale Township. We acquired land there and are under construction for three warehouses. And as part of that development plan, we needed to improve Killinger Road. So with that being said, we started talking about how can we approve this road? And it was brought to our attention that multimodal funds could be available. So we went ahead with that application for multimodal funds and we realized through road safety audit issues and whatnot and talking to John Pitsky that about a mile north of our site, there needed to be road improvement because there was a road safety issue at the corner of nine thirty-four and Clear Springs Road. So in order to maximize multimodal funds from the state, we went ahead and applied putting both those projects together. Killinger Road Improvement, all along where Hershey through the DHL Development down to North Point Development, right before it hits four twenty-two, and we bundled that with the improvement that may be needed at nine thirty-four and Clear Springs Road. So with that, we are awarded multimodal funds of three million dollars from Pendott. And at that point, you know, through the Pendott processes and the length of them, and with the development happening in South Andale Township, the length of time was going to be a bit too long and DHL needed to go ahead and do all the improvements to Killinger Road. And so we self-funded that because we needed the improvement done. It was going to affect our site, Hershey and others. So we went ahead and funded all of that. So we forfeited the multimodal funds at Killinger Road. And we then went through the process of saying, now we have three million dollars and then we pledged to match one point four million less, three hundred thousand we've spent on engineering to get all the roadway plans complete for nine thirty-four and Killinger Road. So our contribution would be one point one million plus a three point, three million dollar grant from the state and we would dedicate them all to the nine thirty-four roundabout. So with that being said, now we're in a position where Pendott has changed the requirements on the project and has asked DHL to not only fund the one point one million, but also to provide a one hundred and ten percent bond for the entire value of the project, which would mean that DHL would fund one point one million dollars into escrow for the project and then have to submit a bond to Pendott for four point nine million. And that isn't possible for us at this point with the change in terms. So what we'd like to talk to you about and have a conversation about is would the county be willing to accept our one point one million and the three million dollars from Pendott to then improve this roadway where there's a road safety audit issue? And I think one of the points is that DHL has completed their development plan with all the road improvements at Killinger Road. We've adhered to all the development plans that we are required to do as part of our project. And we were just trying, because we know we're putting trucks on the road, safety is an issue. So we were trying to get additional funding for this nine thirty-four Clear Springs Roads, but we're not required to do it, but we'd still like the money to come here to Lebanon County. So what we're asking is for the county to take these funds and then improve the road.
Do you have a written synopsis of the numbers you're proposing?
I, we can, we can send that to you.
You want to give us three million and one point four million?
One point, I will give you all the engineering drawings. Those have cost us three million to date, so we have of the Clear Springs Roundabout. So I don't know if John, you want to project those. So DHL's already pre-funded. We have, this is the line and grade submission. We've gone through three line and grade submissions with Pendott that they've approved. We have a highway occupancy permit ready to go. We've paid for all that engineering and then in PDS stormwater engineering. We already have all of those ready to go and ready to be submitted to the state. So we would gift those to the county. And then we would fund to the county one point one million by September thirtieth this year. And then the county would take on the construction of this project and then can draw on the three million dollars worth of funds from Pendott.
Yeah, I, I, what I'll add is.
Just introduce yourself.
Sure. So I'm, you introduce yourself. Oh, sorry. Kelly Post with DHL Supply Chain. And I'm Kathy Bruder with Saxons Tom. So I'm the lobbyist for DHL. And then we're working with GMS Funding Solutions. Marissa Price and Amy Cronenberg called in virtually. And they are the grant writing and compliance team working with DHL. And then we work closely with Song and John through this process and with Dan in the Senator's Office to get support for the grant, which was awarded a few years ago. And it has been a lengthy process. You know, this one, we needed the DEP Environmental Impact Study attached to the contract because of the preserved farmland that would be slightly impacted. So that somewhat slowed the process getting to this point. And then the recent change by Pendott is something new compared to what was understood at the very beginning of the process. And we have made effort recently by going to the district leadership to see if they could check with corporate to see if this new requirement could be changed. And we were told no.
Did you talk to the governor's office to ask them to intervene?
We have not. This has been moving pretty fast over the couple, last couple of weeks. And I just reached out to Dan in the Senator's Office yesterday. So he's had less than twenty-four hours notice because we were coming in here today. My understanding is that court, Pendott Corporate has looked at this and Chief Counsel in Pendott is the one that made the change with General Counsel's blessing from the Governor's Office.
Do you have these things in writing to share with us?
The hundred and ten percent requirement.
Well, you know, your original understanding should be in writing somewhere and what has changed in writing? I mean.
Oh, we can get everything. Yes.
I'm going on hearsay right now.
Yeah. Yeah. And we had a, maybe just one conversation with the county solicitor to because of the timing of your workshop today, that's why we wanted to get in sooner than later. But we can send all of the documents to you. And if Amy and Marissa, if we could have them introduce themselves because they are the ones that work on the actual grant application and the compliance documents, are they still on there?
Yep, we're still here.
Great.
Yep, you're on.
If you wouldn't mind just giving us your viewpoint and fill in some of these blanks for us.
Sure. So this is.
This is Amy Cronenberg. I'm with GMS Funding Solutions.
I apologize in the district.
You have two devices on, sorry.
Yeah, Amy, I think if you meet, since you're on team now.
Okay. And can you, can you all, can you all hear me okay now? Great. Except I can't hear you. I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm gonna, Marissa, can you just say something so I can make sure?
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, I, I'm sorry. Okay, so yeah, we, we can certainly provide a copy of the current grant agreement and the new grant agreement that we were issued by Pendott. Like, you know, Kathy was explaining and Kelly was explaining, for the first year, we, we've been working through. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm, I'm seeing one of the commissioners do this that you can't hear me.
You're very tinny and it's hard to understand you.
All right, we're fine. I mean, I, you may want to move your seat because we can hear very clearly.
Can this be turned down?
Turned down?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I do apologize for the technical audio difficulties. If it's easier for me to call in from my phone, I will, I will happily do that. I defer to you all.
I think we can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So go, going back to, you know, these differing requirements in writing, certainly we can provide a copy of the original grant agreement and guidelines for the program that we were operating under for over a year in working with Pendott to get a grant agreement in place. It was just in May that Pendott issued a new template grant agreement as well as an edict that all existing projects, even those that had been awarded under the previous requirements must adhere to the new grant agreement and that there wouldn't be any exceptions to that. So in, in working through those issues, we've determined that between all of the investment that, that DHL has already made and this new letter of credit requirement, it's going beyond, way, way beyond both the timeline and the financial scope that DHL had originally committed to. Now I'll say, an important note is that there typically when you have, as you know, land development projects like this, they would need to go through an HOP process in order to get their land development plans approved. And that's the process that requires that these perform, or improvements be performed. But because DHL accesses off of Killinger Road, they did not need to get an HOP. So their land development plan was approved and as Kelly indicated, the project is well underway. And there isn't an actual requirement in place today for them to either obtain the HOP or construct the improvements. But because they've gotten this far in the process, they wanted to stick to their commitments and do the best that they can to complete the project. It's gone on too long now and they've incurred many, many expenses over and above what they originally anticipated. So what we're trying to do is essentially hand the county a gift. We have a three million dollar MTF obtained. I think you know how competitive those grants are and how rare it is to get a three million dollar award. We'd like to hand that over to the county unencumbered and as well as one point one million dollars in private funds from DHL, a donation from a stakeholder, if you will, that can be deposited into an escrow account for the county's use. And that could, deposit could occur by the end of September. They would assign all rights to the grant to the county. And then as well as all of the designed plans, which are virtually complete, they just need to file the final HOP and ask that the county take over this project and treat it just as it would a county bridge project or another roundabout or some other sort of county-led infrastructure project. Now, I understand that the grant agreement require, or has some provisions related to liquid fuels requiring a security of liquid fuels. But that is a provision that's in any Pendott agreements with any political subdivision. And I think it's important to note that we believe this is a very low-risk proposition because the current estimated cost of the roundabout is two point nine million dollars. So between the three million dollar grants and the one million dollar or one point one million dollar private donation from DHL, there is a very, very healthy contingency built into this project. Our, our concern is that if the county can't assume these grant funds or chooses not to and can't assume or chooses not to accept the private donation, that money will stay with DHL, the one point one million, and the three million dollar grant will go back to Pendott. And that'll be four point one million dollars worth of outside investment that could have gone toward this infrastructure in the county. So we're trying to preserve it and keep it here.
Marissa, do you have anything?
I don't have anything additional to add.
So if we don't step up, you don't have any other alternatives for, like the township hasn't been approached?
We, we were working and I'll let Kelly, you know, from DHL speak to her relationship and regular interaction with the township when Randy Leisure was the chair. But since he stepped off the board, I think the communications have been a bit more challenging. So we don't necessarily have the partnership with the township. I think there's just been the transition and.
I think from my standpoint, even speaking with Paul, the county's solicitor is that the capacity is, that the township capacity may not be there because they're very rural. They have not done a roadway improvement like this. I, I think that they just don't have experience in this and Randy Leisure was championing this and, and had experience that he was bringing to the table and then as he has resigned, it's just become more challenging. And we're afraid that the roadway won't get completed timely with just the township is my fear.
But you, and you've lost Randy, somebody who was instrumental.
Instrumental with the public and helping us and really championing this project.
I may just, might have just asked a couple of questions here, but Jonathan and Song, is this intersection on, on this that you would have had with high incidents of accidents that would be one of the, you know, is on your hit list, so to speak?
What I can do, Commissioner, is maybe just a brief background. I mean, part of the reason that this sort of overlaps a shared interest is not only what DHL is doing in their site in South Andale, which is the project improvements actually in North Andale, but we also did a road safety audit with Pendott. Brought in Michael Baker, Aim, was their consultant under an open act and went from Harrison Drive down to Royal Road, so including North Andale, Anvil and South Andale, where Walton Development had studied. One of the locations that was identified as a primary location, I think you guys hear me talk about at the NPO meetings about performance measures of safety. Pendott's network screening tool identifies this location. So it's already an unsafe location that we have identified. So to Kelly and to Kathy's point is if the four million dollars goes away at some point in the future, obviously this intersection isn't going to get better. And we are going to have to find some way to fund that within the NPO's program, you know, to put in improvement at some point in the future, likely the, you know, cost and other things won't change at that point.
A little out of my depth with the bond requirement. Now, is that a bond, insurance bond? So you, that would be, you have to put up for the four point nine million or whatever?
Yes, for the entire value of the grant, the three million plus the match, which is one point four. It comes out to like four point eight something, so rounding four point nine million.
You're asking the county to absorb that?
Yeah, I could, I could talk to that before Commissioner. And to expound on what was mentioned by Amy, so being that, being a political subdivision, the provision that would apply to us and Kathy and Amy forwarded over the template agreement between Pendott and what was originally supposed to be DHL. And I could just sort of read it verbatim here from the agreement pertaining to the liquid fuel money. If the sponsor is a political subdivision and fails to perform any of the terms, conditions, or provisions of the agreement included but not limited to any default, then the sponsor authorizes Pendott to withhold so much of the sponsor's liquid fuel tax allocation as may be necessary. So rather than having, rather than putting up a bond as the private entities are now required to do, the, the state now has, I don't want to say leverage, but has sort of some control over this. Right. With regard to our liquid fuel allocation. This was something I had spoken to Jamie about. And I, out of all the provisions in this agreement, that was the one that I wanted to make sure the board was fully aware of. That's something that Amy had mentioned.
Okay, all right. Jamie, anything?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. Could you mind? And Marissa and Amy, I'm Jamie Walken with the county administrator here. We didn't get to meet. So if the four point, what did, four point four, four point eight million?
Four point one million in cash. They would come to you, three hundred thousand of that, yeah.
The bond?
Oh, the bond, four point nine for a private.
So you don't have to, they're not asking that you put up four point nine million in escrow. They're asking a bond, you know, the cost of that bond.
So we're owned wholly by Deutsche Post out of Germany and Deutsche Post will not issue the bond.
They won't issue the bond?
No, my parent company will not issue the bond. So in their eyes, we have always pledged and committed to Pendott for our matching funds, which was the one point one. And so therefore, DHL's only authorized to give one point one million to this project.
So if, if, understanding Amy correctly, the project is estimated to cost two point nine million. But there is four point four million available. If it costs two point nine million in the end, who saves the, the one point two million or the one, sorry, one point six, five million? Does, does DHL still have to contribute the one point one if the multimodal funds alone can cover the cost?
You're giving that to them.
Yes, I'm giving it to you upfront.
So that's going to the county?
Is coming to the county no matter what.
No strings attached.
No, sorry.
We keep it if the project costs two point nine million?
Proportionately, you won't get the three million dollars grant. Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. But you know, proportionally, you, you have to show receipt and then you get funded back the proportion amount from the grant. So, you know, Pendott will only fund to the extent, but I am giving you one point one million dollars unencumbered. And if you have, if we have monies left over, then you can put them in your infrastructure, however you need.
A little bit of difficulty.
Yeah, I mean, the MTF, Jamie, is, I guess the word grant is sort of.
It was my impression, or not my understanding, it was my impression that the one point one million was a share of the project that you were being required to contribute.
Yes, but if the county takes this, we are giving you in escrow, one point one million by end of September thirtieth this year.
And to expound upon that though, so in the agreement, there is typically, if it was just, if DHL was not even involved in this, there would be, be a sponsor required match of thirty percent. The, the money that DHL is contributing here, form of, of having this money in an escrow account for the county to draw upon, would, that would mean the thirty percent. So the county would not have to come up with thirty percent otherwise.
No, I, I understood the county wasn't having to come up. My concern, where I was leading was my concern being that the liquid fuels money being put at risk. I, I heard low risk. I've seen really strange things happen, you know, you don't know what that risk, I mean, you can't predict every, every failure point, but and that money, that is money that, that we commit, we count on, you know, if that is put at risk and if Pendott were to claw that back for some reason, we'd be in a bind in terms of bridge inspections, bridge constructions, bridge maintenance, et cetera. So, you know, my thoughts were that where the commissioners had to decide whether the risk was verse, was worth the reward of completing this traffic improvement. But now that you're saying that this one point one is on the table, then our risk is that only if it costs more than four point four million, then somebody would decide who's on the hook for that. But if it's anything under that, it's the county's to utilize.
Correct, correct, yep.
Jamie, if I may, I apologize. If, if I may, you know, when we talk about low risk, by assigning the project and the grant agreement to the county, it's not as though you're securing your liquid fuels for a project that some third party is controlling. The county will control it, bid, hold the construction contracts and everything else. So it would be constructed just like any other county infrastructure project. And in fact, so you all would have control over the project, its budget, cost overruns, et cetera.
I understand that. I, I just, I mean, we, we've all been involved in projects that you just have no idea what might go sideways and suddenly it does. And there's a problem with the construction. There's a huge sinkhole underneath it or something like that. And the next thing you know, there are five hundred thousand dollar change orders. So who, so who picks that up? I guess that still comes out of the, and when was the two point nine estimate?
February of this year based on final line and grade drawing that Pendott approved.
Okay.
John? No, I was just gonna say, I guess from the perspective of the what ifs, I guess, the one thing that does give me a little bit of peace of mind, similar to what we did with Killinger is, in that case, they had secured money through the TIAF. And in that case, we actually were able to tap into the NPO's STU money. So I mean, I think, given that you're talking about an onboarding project, I think there's still that ability to access resources that the NPO has. If it's a worst case scenario, I guess it's not this area, debt or something, if something would go so.
Okay. Two other questions, John, when, or anybody, when would this project be bid and expected to be led? Is there, is there a timeline at this point?
I think now that we get through some of the setup, I think of how this proceeds forward. We have a valid, I don't know Kelly, when we get the.
Originally said March to get through winter, start in spring, March of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. And what kind of capacity does this take of us to oversee it? We did the same thing at Rutter's, correct? At the, at the intersection at Rutter's?
And we were, we were asked to sort of step in because that was a work. We worked with the district. So I would kind of feel that while I'm not excited about, I have another project, I think, given the impact that this has that we can find.
So is it primarily administrated in terms of?
Probably more processing voices and things like that. Sure that things are getting done according to what I think. The confidence I have with the team that they've selected for the approvals, traffic plan and design, which we've worked with them on a lot of projects in North Cornwall, Craig Malat, who's leading their team, I know him very well. And I think the district, you know, I'm comfortable with district staff assisting us as they did with Killinger. This is my opinion.
Good.
Okay, yes.
You very strong way that, to come in here and not give me some basic written information that outlines your proposal is very poor. It's like a shell game. I do not have enough written information to read, analyze and make a decision. I've heard so many things. I trust my staff, but I don't know you guys. And, you know, it's, it's just been like, what are you talking about? I need to see something in writing. Now, I don't expect volumes that I have to read nine hundred pages or anything like that. But there has to be a summary of what you're asking for in writing and signed with letterhead. So it's official, not just verbal.
We're very sorry. We don't have a summary as you would have expected. So we're sorry for that and we will get you what you're asking.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be helpful to have that. Looking for any formal action today.
Right.
Open the conversation, I think. So I think what you provided is good for today, but yeah, that would be helpful to get all that information. But also you mentioned your communications with the township, you know, have become more difficult. But do you get any sense that the township is against this improvement then, or they just don't have the wherewithal to really manage it?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I would like to also see something in writing from the township that they approve of this project.
That's gonna be my next question. Yeah, that would, I would add that to the letter. That's a good township would be helpful.
And the team has also worked with the pastor at the church at the intersection and his leadership team. Very closely, we had in-person meetings. I was at one of the many meetings I know DHL and the engineering team have had. So there's been due diligence in that regard and a good relationship and communication.
Just an additional comment. I've served several years now in the Economic Development Corporation. And I'm a developer of that entire project and gave us an update a year or so ago and talked about this very concept of using this road and, and his point was not just DHL. So DHL certainly needs this project more so than commissioners do. But yeah, I looked at, there is a need in the community as well for the other commissioners. He noted, the developer noted that truck traffic, again, look at where we're located. Three interstates intersect Lebanon County, but they try to avoid toll roads. So the, the preferred method of getting out of Lebanon County or coming in are the seventy-eight, eighty-one. So most of the traffic's going to go north and this road and, and an improvement there would be the most viable way to do that. Otherwise, you're going to send traffic in the Andale or a limer to try to turn to the north and it's going to be a real problem for the community. So again, it's a need and DHL needs it, but Hershey and the other facilities in that development also are going to benefit.
Jamie, just jumped in. Go ahead.
If, so for the, put up on the screen here, the, the diagram of the intersection, I, you guys, Amy and Marissa, you can see that? Okay, Mike, you mentioned about Preserve Farm being one thing. So I, and so some of this had to be, that had to be dealt with and that has been dealt with. Okay, so all the planets are aligned here. All the work has been done. All approvals have been obtained. This is, and you were ready to go until this change in policy. So there's nothing left. There, there are no loose ends to be tied up by us or anything. Or if there are, what, what, whatever. Um, or if there are, what, what, whatever.
The only issue is the township not responding.
Well, the HOP needs to be filed since we don't have a resolution from the township authorizing us to allow HOP on their behalf. Because we're, we're a private, we can't just go in and improve a public roadway. Um, the HOP has been prepared and we have had lots of feedback from PennDOT, but it hasn't officially been filed with them. So, and also same with MPDS for stormwater. It's prepared, ready to go with all the Ag Board and, um, PennDOT feedback. It just, so you know, we have to go through those filings and obviously get feedback.
Okay. Well, finish this.
Yeah, and to, um, reference to some of the work that's previously been done, one of the things that Amy and, and Kathy had indicated to me, we had a call on Friday, is that as part of the agreement, uh, obviously, and we would be assuming the entire role as the sponsor of the project, uh, but with regard to acquiring any necessary right of ways, a lot of that has been already taken care of. I believe, uh, DHL retained Keystone, uh, was it Keystone acquisitions or to, to do a lot of that work? So that's another part of, of what has been done, uh, you know, up until this point with regard to getting to where we are now.
Well, I must say that I'm much more reassured than I felt maybe 24 hours ago, um, not having, you know, clearly understood everything and processing this and hearing from our folks from planning. And, uh, you know, I, I, it's a green light from my point of view. Get, get the paperwork to the folks that need it. And we'll, you know, get you an answer as, as quickly, you know, up or down, you know? But I can't see us not supporting this when the outcome, it's going to be something that's going to be dealt with at some point in the future. What is that going to cost the county or the, uh, liquid fuels or however, I, I just, I'd take the, you know, burden in hand.
And for the record, uh, when this project was started, the champions were the municipalities.
Yeah, Randy Leisure was.
They were, I mean, from beginning to, to currently, I mean, I think that township really wanted it and there was a public, you know, people from the General Public actually commented on it, but I mean, with Doris says that we did a staff online 34 and that with the white peg group that they're involved in it now. Everybody that, anybody that was willing to be a part of this was asked to be a part of it. So it's not something that we just put out of a hat. It's been long and it's been a tedious process. But there's multiple concepts of this drawing and every one of these drawings changed to actually benefit property owners. So it's something that was championed by the township and, and as a staff, John, I would really do support this, so.
2.9 million. I'm glad to hear that that was February of this year, not pre-COVID or something. So that, that's reassuring to me when you have that kind of a, a cushion, so to speak. And it gets it further as far as the risk reward thing that Jamie mentioned. I just, you know, that makes me feel more comfortable with that. I'm sorry.
I don't know what assurance is I'm getting from you or whoever that if we accept your headache, and I'm putting it, you know, how it's coming across to me, how do I know that other developers are not going to unload their projects on the county? We don't have a big enough pool of money and especially if the governor didn't like this for some reason and pulls our funding for liquid fuels and things, I see it as a big red flag for Lebanon County.
Why don't we wait to see how big a red flag it is when we get the paperwork?
Against some other projects and all the development.
Or once the government. I want to point out that the difference here is that for a developer normally to be able to finish their development site, they need to finish these type of projects for their access fee. This is very different of a situation than normal development. DHL doesn't need that roundabout and it wasn't a requirement of DHL to finish their South Anvil site. So most developers who are working on an HOP need to finish that part for them to have their own business. Um, I can also say the multimodal grant, we've worked very closely from even before the award was given by PennDOT with district aid support, the deputy secretary of PennDOT, the secretary at the time of PennDOT, and since then, updating them, keeping them informed, and the grant awards are going to go to the project. Um, the governor's office will.
The package objective, the feedback on Christian Phillips. To again, I'm at this point much more comfortable with the idea and again, hearing from our staff that they're in favor of this and if you provide the appropriate paperwork, a solicitor gets a chance to review it and authorize it to up and be very comfortable and sound like good. But I would like that letter too from township.
Absolutely.
It'd be helpful. I think you're, but again, to address your concerns, Commissioner, I, I hear that, but again, just because we're, if, if, if we're moving forward with this project, it doesn't bind us to any other project. Uh, we're going to discuss this project and any future projects on their merit alone. So not sure what I.
I don't know what a court of law would say if somebody sued the county because we helped this group and not another group.
Pretty confident with you. About conjecture, yes. It's on tomorrow's agenda because we needed to have a place marker in the event that you wanted to do it that soon. Because of the requirements of sunshine law to get it advertised and so on. If, if you were interested in, um, in absorbing what they're going to provide and so on, it's no problem to do it on August 1st. Just, you know, you can have everything, I'm sure everything easily ready by then.
Oh yeah, we can get you everything if not today, tomorrow morning.
That's fine. So that's up to you.
I think that's where we are. I don't want to bulldoze this thing, although I'm very comfortable with all the folks that have invested time in, in DHL. I, I get it that this, this is not having to be done. It's going to be done ahead of maybe any other timeframe that we could have expected and it'll be a safer road for the, for everybody. So there's a lot of.
So if you just cross that path tomorrow, if you want to just announce at the beginning that it'll be, it'll be, uh, delayed until August 1st. And you, just to clarify one more thing, I'm sorry to be repetitive about this, but you said that the, that the, the parent company of DHL, am I understanding?
It's Deutsche Post.
Okay.
It's the German post office.
Okay, strange.
Um, and, and Germany, just so, um, host is privatized, so it's publicly traded. It's not any, it's not a public entity.
So they, they, they simply conveyed or communicated, they're just not willing to, 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 to do the, to go to the bond, to get the bond.
Right, due to the risk, because if we fund escrow 1.1 million, then we issue a $4.9 million bond. And let's say that bond would be called for any reason, we're really putting almost $6 million out there at, at risk for DHL. So what they were comfortable with is we stated from the beginning, we would allocate 1.4 million, 1.1 in cash and 300,000 in engineering costs. And that was what we would provide to the project. So I only have authorization as of today to give 1.4 million in value.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, Song, you had something, maybe, did I miss that?
Oh no, I was just gonna just piggyback on what, um, I was gonna say, I mean, like DHL does not, is not required to do this and with all the time and effort that John has spent over the years regarding this intersection, eventually we're gonna have to do it and it's, I mean, it, it is just like our trail 27th street. We got everybody in line and when PennDOT came back to us and said that it was gonna wait, have to wait to 2027 to get 27th street bridge fix. And everyone partnered up and, and, and we're getting it done. So this is an opportunity that, my opinion is just my opinion. That we can't.
So loaded. Thank you, Song. We got it.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Sorry, just want to make sure you understand. We've also been working with, John, what's the name of the bicycle club? And we've made sure that they are, yeah, we've made sure that all their requirements are incorporated in our designs as well.
You have a letter from them? Just kidding.
We could, they were very excited once everything got put together.
Jim Mensor had a question.
Yeah, Kelly, um.
Jim Smith, um.
Kelly Post.
I'm sorry, these are the, for the state.
Yep. This, this is, it's Post correct.
U S D S.
Um, you said early on that DHL can't pay for this, but yet your company is a $5 billion plus company. I, I'm gonna have a disconnect here that 1.4, 1.6 million and change, whatever, versus a 5. When you're already this far into it, this seems like a lot of work to move something forward that your company could probably easily absorb. Um, I, I'm really having a disconnect when 1.5 million total cost of my fee to the, to the company with grants out there and your company is like worth 5.4 billion.
So for each project, we have a budget and have our ROIs we have to meet and that's what was allocated towards this project.
And then for Ms. Bruder, um, you noted that farmland preservation is slightly impacted. He finds slightly impacted in terms of volume based on the latest project that you want to put through. And is this why you're coming to the county to circumvent? Because my understanding of farmland preservation is once preserved, always preserved. Now you're, you're changing, you're asking them to take land that's been preserved for this eminent domain project?
So the specifics you're asking, I'd have to defer to the engineers who did the studies on that. But I know we needed to do an environmental impact study because of the farmland impact. And that's what delayed getting the agreements then finalized with PennDOT. That was, that's part of the reason there was a longer process for this transportation.
I just want to be clear, there's no evidence of debate here, Jim.
Well, what, what, what's, I mean, land's been preserved, that's supposed to be.
Yeah, the farmer agreed to working with us.
Is that the farm on the right? Did you come down 934 south and has a long lane?
You, you know, when was this made?
We just had one at a time and be recognized by the chair. Okay, you're asked, you're asking a question to whom are you asking it?
Well, it was originally Kelly, I mean, Ms. Bruder just asked why, like how much land is going to actually be taken?
Okay, but eminent domain is being addressed by, that there is not.
Cause you said you need to get that. And then my question was, how does land that's presently preserved forever now be taken? You're saying the farmer voluntarily, is there?
I didn't say, I didn't say he voluntarily. I said he worked with the team and I was not part of those discussions. So I don't want to summarize what I.
What team is that? Engineering team?
The full. He has met with the township and was supportive because of the road safety issues at that intersection.
And then someone said it's a Baumgartner family, a Baumgartner family. And, uh.
Can we hold off on, there's another meeting over here.
I'm just trying to get clarity here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I don't want, I can, we just.
Go ahead.
Take a pause until you get your clarity or do.
Well, I was just trying to get, is there a taking, I guess is the, the question that Jim's getting to is, you know, is there land coming out of farmland preservation to be, to make this project viable, I think is the question you're getting at. Um, and, and can the, could the farmer just, you know, with a signature, give away that land? Uh, I, I'm according to John, we're, we're talking about, I, I think a fractional piece of land. I don't, and, but I don't know, and maybe, maybe getting this paperwork or this, you know, some clarity from what they're going to submit might, might straighten that out. But we're not looking at, I don't think we're looking at, you know, even anywhere near acres or acre or anything. The way it looks, there's a radius on the, on the, on the north side of the road there that probably is, was needed, but I, I just, that's, that's what I'm, I'm sorry, I was just trying to get to that when I was over here. I know I was interrupting and it was polite, so I can't whisper very well, so.
Very well.
That's, that's where I'm just trying to kind of cut to the chase with, I think I know what Jim's getting at. So if that's available information, you know, what it, how, what working with the team means from the farm owner and, and what kind of, uh, area were we talking about there to accommodate that, that radius or that part of the circle?
All right, Kelly, are you finished? Go ahead.
I had the answer to it.
Yes, she has one more question and he would.
Yes, at their last meeting, North Anvil Township made it sound like the county wants to take this project over. And I'm hearing the commissioner said, well, we don't really have much information, but they want to take it over. That comment was specifically made in a public forum at their last meeting. I was at that meeting.
Okay, we'll get clarity, we're gonna get a letter.
But you're, but you seem like, I'm hearing, whoa, the county wants to take it over and do this project and they're taking it out of our hands as North Anvil Township. And yet you're saying you don't really have much information, but that meeting's already preceded this meeting. I'm, I'm not connecting the dots in that regard. I mean, is this much further along than what you're saying here publicly? Where is this coming at? Did this come from John, did this come, not to put you down? Or Matt, or where North Anvil seems to think they've already been informed that the county is taking this project out of their.
I think that might be as part to some of the discussions that involve Paul, is there, I think some of the initial discussions about what we had to do in order to sort the next steps of who's going to help spearhead this, with this curveball. And I don't think township and the conversations they had are interested. So the idea was in order to keep this project moving forward, the county likely stepped into that role. So the indication is, we would, we would pursue forward. So I, I don't know if that's where.
And if the insinuation is that we know more than we're letting on, that we're playing dumb here, uh, no, that's not the case.
No, I'm asking, they say one thing now I'm hearing.
I understand what you're saying, well, maybe you're letting out, you're not letting on that you know more than you. If you want to have somebody, if you want to have Paul here, or you want to have somebody from the North Lebanon at the next meeting on the first when we adopt this, uh, let them put the cards on the table, but I think a letter will be doing it and I think some element of trust has to be, yes.
We, we, uh.
You're answering what?
Uh, the, the Pauls and North.
Let me finish, she is.
Yeah, it's not staying on the same topic here. So, uh, it's my impression that North Anvil is, um, probably happy that if the county were to do that. And unfortunately, Paul Bammerstrider's not, wasn't able to come to this meeting. Uh, we would have liked that, but he was unable to because he could shed some, some light on that. But, um, if, if what North Anvil is saying at that last meeting, and I, how long ago was that meeting? Last couple of weeks, I guess, that he would have been there. That, my guess is, that's all it is, is that that stemmed from probably the conversations that he's had with, like, John and Song, maybe Paul has or whoever. And I mean, that, just going on that, having preliminary talks with the staff doesn't translate to commissioners ultimately considering it. So I mean, there's, as you know, the way these meetings go, there's a whole lot of underground that goes on before we get to presenting things to the commissioners. So nothing like that. There's been no, uh, you know, verbal, okay, we'll do this prior, prior to this. That's, that's where, that's where we are today. That's why this is a workshop.
100% new information that we're getting to help us make this decision. And Madam, you're.
And if it's, if it's helpful, you're saying, my comment was, was not some unconditional approval is the pending paperwork and, and, uh, you know, our solicitor getting to see everything, but I'm saying, I learned more information today. I, I, you know, I mean, it, it makes more sense to me today and still why we would do such.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Thank you. I wanted to point out, because no one has said this, I feel like we're being set up. The Conservation District on their board was Randy Leisure. So how many hats was he wearing? And all of a sudden he designs. He knew this was coming, you knew this was coming. And here we sit, trying to pick up the pieces. I'm not happy. Like I say, I had nothing in writing other than a picture ahead of time. I should have had that to review before this meeting. It doesn't smell right.
See if we can approve, uh, your thinking on that with documentation that you're requesting. And I apologize if you feel that you've been insulted.
No, we just wanted to have the conversation to understand the upside even, and then can go forward if there was one.
Anything else before we go any deeper? Okay, thank you folks for joining in on the, uh, video. And, uh, thank you for enlightening us with this and.
For this entire information.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks.